Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe in the Constitution of the United States of America, and in the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vivian. Second? Thank you, Nohalani, VP Nohalani. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Due to unforeseen circumstances, we will not approve minutes at this meeting. In the near future, we will be shared, uh, minutes will be shared with the Board and the public.
No, no comments.
Okay. So, um, due to no comments, we will now begin with comments from our superintendent.
Okay. Good evening, Board members. Happy summer. Summer's in full swing. Uh, I wanna, before I get into the majority of my remarks, I do want to start out with uh, an important update for the Board on our summer programming. So, uh, Brian, I will just let you know when to progress. Uh, obviously, as you know, we've worked really hard to make summer, uh, a continuation of the school year, uh, by working to increase the number of students attending. Uh, this work and effort is led predominantly by, uh, Dr. Carlos Coto and Simone Miranda in the Office of Innovation, Equity, and Engagement. Deputy Superintendent Rutnick has put some legwork in helping with the E S Y program and, um, covering while Dr. Coto went away, took a little personal time for vacation. So she has been running around all over the city, making sure that, uh, programs are running. So, next slide, Brian? You can go through the next two, actually. Those are just our vision, our pillars. Uh, but this is enrollment, and I thought this was important to share with the Board as of right now. This is the current number of students by campus and site. Uh, you're gonna see that pretty much every single one of our elementary schools is used, except for, I believe, two sites are not being used due to, uh, summer work or construction. Page being one of them. Um, and I believe there's one more.
Zoller.
Zoller, thank you. Uh, so two sites are not being used, but you can see our numbers are pretty high. Um, How is at the forefront of summer programming enrollment, which is great. Uh, that's awesome, because if you know How, you know it's like embedded in that community. So people are just hopefully walking right out of their house, right to summer program. Chad Sitz has done a good job in recruiting his own kids, but also they have Zoller students as well, uh, located there, which explains some of the high numbers. Um, and to the right, you see our middle school and high school, and this is new, um, in terms of offering summer enrichment at both the secondary level as well. So you're gonna notice that those numbers increased our numbers to almost eighteen-hundred students, uh, which is higher than we were last year. So, um, we are continuing the trend of progressing and having more of our students engage in our programming. Um, it is a big lift. This planning starts like once program's over, they like literally start meeting as a committee, figure out what they can do better. Uh, next slide, please. This is the number of staff that are working at the school, so it's over three hundred staff members currently working this summer, um, which is a big, you know, you think about it, it's almost like thirty percent of our staff working this summer. Uh, that's really big for us, um, which is great. Uh, it tells you there's a need. A lot of our paraprofessionals are working this summer, a lot of our security staff, a lot of our, uh, teachers continue to work through. Um, and what I want to point out here is that we have sixteen students working through Schenectady Connects as student counselors in our programming. So that's part of that mayor's, uh, work with us in terms of employing our youth. Uh, so I do definitely want to recognize Schenectady Connects for assisting us and making sure we can employ some of our own students, uh, to work as counselors at our elementaries. Uh, we even have students from other districts or graduates from other districts working. We've got, uh, DiCaprio's, uh, daughter, and we've got, uh, Owen Rutnick is working over there at, uh, Pleasant Valley. So we've even got some staff members bringing their own kids to come and work. So that's great. A family affair here. Next slide. Uh, I want to highlight some of the partnerships. Obviously, this isn't, uh, uh, so fall solely on the district. You know, we believe in teamwork makes the dream work, and many of our partners come in and help us with this lift. So I just wanted to highlight internal partners, people internally, Farm to Table, which is obviously Rebecca Hendrickson, uh, Hendrickson leading that work. Uh, there's some, uh, work going on for social emotional learning with Righteous Minds. For our seventh and eighth graders, we're doing some fishing. Um, we're trying to provide kids, uh, experiences, uh, to things they don't typically get to in a regular school year, uh, where we know a lot of learning goes on. Uh, to the right, you'll see some of our external partners, and these are folks that we've got either contracts with through community-based organizations, uh, for summer programming, either through Twenty-First Century Learning, um, or some of it goes through our community schools. Um, and so you can see some of the program being offered, uh, by there. I won't read them all to you, but there's a lot of stuff going on. If you have an opportunity, if you look at our social media, you'll see a ton of photos. Uh, Justin's been out. Many of our staff members are sending stuff. Many of them are posting stuff. They're just excited to do some things that they can't always get to in traditional curriculum in the school year. So this is really cool stuff. Uh, next slide. This is also some of the, um, more of the academic or curriculum program in the building. So obviously, there's a lot of field experiences with what our community-based organizations do, but this is some of the curriculum we're doing. Obviously, we're still building on the wit and wisdom. We're doing some of the Tang math. Uh, Legends of Learning is our, like, esports, uh, curriculum. It's, uh, you know, they do a lot of team play, some competitiveness. Our C B O's are doing some project-based learning and lessons with them. And at the secondary level, uh, we're doing also some P B L, some game design, some murals, some, um, I think it's called Food for Thought, uh, S E L stuff. Uh, Start Startup Smart Up is an entrepreneur program that we have some of our students participating in. So I just wanted to highlight some of that. Next one. Um, sorry, that was a mistake. Go on to the next one. I forgot to delete that slide. Sorry about that. Um, there, this is new to us this year. This was done by Darryl in the Office of Teaching and Learning. Uh, Darryl Redman, he's leading a after-enrichment theater program, and this runs from two-thirty to five-thirty. Uh, it's pretty cool. We've got, uh, it's targeted for third through fifth graders. You can see the numbers at the bottom. There's about forty students in the program, nine staff members from various titles and roles, some of them in arts, some of them are music, and those are the things that they're doing, but at the end, they're going to perform the musical Bugs, which I've never heard of it. Only Bugs I heard of Bugs Life in Disney, but, uh, I don't know if it's Disney, it's Pixar, actually. Uh, my kids would yell at me for not knowing that. Uh, next slide. Uh, so summer school program as well. So what I shared earlier was summer enrichment. We also do a, you know, our traditional academic summer school program. Tyrone Omealy's our lead at that, and it mainly focuses on the secondary. And so Tyrone works second year in a row, working with Capital Region BOSI's. We house this at the high school. Uh, next year, as things progress with the facilities, we won't be able to house it at the high school, so, um, we will have, we've already made them aware of that. But other districts partner with us in this work because it runs through BOSI, so Niskiuna, Gilderlin, Mohanesson also participate, and there's approximately around nine hundred students attending the, uh, campus, and five hundred of those students, five fourteen to be exact, are Schenectady students, and that's to break down the grades, just so you can kind of see which kids, uh, are there. And a lot of this is credit recovery in terms of recovering the class. They may have failed. Uh, some of it is regions prep, getting ready for an exam they may have not passed. And that's a little bit tricky, because a lot of the kids still qualified for the COVID nineteen exemption on the regions exams, but we've been encouraging kids to come back and still sit for it, just because, you know, that looks a little better, a score, a passing score, looks better than an exemption potentially on a transcript. They don't have to, but that's what we're encouraging. And that does end, uh, this is the last group that, that does have that waiver in effect. So moving forward for the younger groups, they have to take all the five regions for as long as they're still around, but we know that could change with state. Uh, next slide. Uh, I think this is also equally important. Uh, oftentimes, people don't realize that school does more than educate. We also feed our kids, and I think it's, you know, commendable for the Board to make sure that this continues to happen. This happens out of the business office, and Terry Galulie, Elaine, um, kind of lead this work. And you can see there, we have about seven thousand breakfasts we've served, and this is just in seven days, uh, uh, and about little under seven thousand lunches. So I'm not sure if kids are leaving and not wanting to eat lunch, or maybe lunch is not as good as that picture that was sent with it, the slide, but, uh, you know, ma, you know, who knows? But, uh, we also do snack as well for the after-enrichment theater program. So those kids, uh, they've gotten a hundred and thirty-six snacks and dinners. So we, because those kids are later and go into the, technically, the dinnertime, we feed them dinner as well. So that's just, again, something that I think is important for the community to know, it's important for the Board to know. Um, and we'll have final numbers of this at the end of the program in August, but I wanted just to, uh, share the impact of the program. Next slide. So just any questions on summer programs? Um, if not, I'll continue with my remarks.
I, does anyone have any questions? I do have two quick questions.
Sure.
Um, the community partnership slide, um, I'm assuming we provide transportation to those.
Correct.
Okay, how does that work? Do they have the same bus stop?
Yeah, so we, we bus students to the program, but when they go to a field trip, we do like a normal school year. They fill out a form and indicate where they're going. Every school, every summer school program has a site leader that kind of facilitates that. We pick them up at the site, take them to where they're going, and bring them back to the main site.
Okay.
If it happens during that day, we don't ever transport them from the site home. They always come back to school first and then transport them.
Okay. And then you don't have to answer now, but I was wondering about Tang man?
Yeah, I can get more information on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. So thank you, Superintendent Soled. We will continue with Board comments.
Hold on, I got a couple more things. I just, that was just my summer enrichment.
Okay.
Um, so thanks, Brian, for putting those slides. Couple of things I just want to make the Board aware of that is positive news, and I'm not sure if you are aware of it, but recently, we were awarded a P-Tech grant from Governor Hoco announced about a week ago, a two-point-seven million dollar award for us with our partners at SUNY Schenectady, along with some other local entities that are gonna help us create a new program called, uh, Smart Tech Scholars. Uh, this will be in conjunction with our Smart Scholars Program, which we already kind of have in place for early college high school, but these students will focus on, um, businesses in the tech industry or college degrees that line up to STEM and those tech careers. So I wanted to make sure the Board was aware of that. Obviously, yeah, we were also awarded a grant earlier this year on gear up, and so, uh, we've started that work. That's also being led by Mr. Omealy, uh, at the secondary level. And there's a summer camp exclusive, exclusively being held for incoming eighth graders. Um, that's gonna be in August, and so there'll be a information session, there'll be some notifications going out to all the eighth graders to make sure they have an opportunity to get registered. That's in August, from August fourteenth through August twenty-fifth. That goes from nine to two, and it'll be a night of middle school, and that'll be targeting those students. Um, again, this is a national initiative that basically prepares our kids, starting in eighth grade, moving on up, uh, to for college. So, uh, we got the award. It takes every seventh grader moving into eighth grade, and it'll follow them for the remainder of their, uh, high school career. We hired two individuals that will be, uh, kind of gear up counselors or gear up facilitators. Uh, we've already hired them, they've started already with us, and they'll be located at two of the three middle schools, uh, to start this work. Again, we're gonna hold a kickoff session, um, on the last day of camp, so more information will be coming. Parents of eighth graders will be encouraged to attend and learn more about gear up and how it will benefit their children throughout eighth grade. So more to come on that. I do want to provide an important, another important update. Uh, this is more around our operation as a school system. Last year, we, uh, successfully negotiated a new teacher contract. As part of that teacher contract, it extended technically the teacher workday at the elementary level, um, but unfortunately, given some of the challenges we had last year with staffing, we weren't able to extend the school day for the children. Um, through the hard work, uh, led by, uh, Mr. DiCaprio, Deputy Superintendent Rutnick, Office of Teaching and Learning, Human Resources, School Principals, and many others, we're now able to extend our elementary school day an additional thirty minutes. Uh, so that will be communicating that to families that's going out, starting today. It went out to parents. Um, and basically, what that does is kids would get dismissed at two-ten, they'll now get dismissed at two-forty. Um, and so that gives every, uh, elementary school thirty additional minutes with kids, uh, increases our instructional time. Uh, again, we'll be sending this out continuously, and not only from a district, but principals will be sending out to let parents know. So it's a slight change in their dismissal time, but for us, it, it will add up to about ninety hours of instructional time for our kids over the course of a school year. And so we're really excited about that, and again, I want to commend my staff for working hard to, uh, put this to fruition, uh, because we know, given everything we see about literacy rates and math scores, that kids need a little bit more time on task, and so that will help us. Elementary new student orientation dates are scheduled, so they're gonna be posted on our website, social media. We're gonna continue to communicate these dates throughout, uh, uh, the summer and to all new families in elementary schools. Again, if you want, those dates are already scheduled, they're on our website, on our district calendar on our website, uh, but we're also gonna be sending communication out home as well. So those are for new student orientation dates at the elementary school. Uh, um, talked about summer enrichment program. Obviously, there's a lot of professional development going on this summer. More to come on that towards the end of the summer. Um, we have two job fairs coming up, so we'd love for the Board to help us spread the word. July twenty-seventh, from four to six-thirty at Steinmetz Career Leadership Campus, and on August tenth, uh, at a night of from seven-thirty in the morning till about noon, uh, we're gonna be hiring for a variety of positions that we still have vacant. Um, so that is posted, that has been posted, continues to be shared, but I definitely want to uplift that since summer is going quickly. Uh, we're almost at the end of July already, isn't that crazy? Um, we are asking for, uh, feedback from parents of students who were in pre-K past year, this past year. We've emailed and we're mailing a postcard home to parents for them to complete a brief survey. This is basically around self-improvement on our pre-K program, um, and that's being led by Ms. Valente and Dr. Chisholm's Office of Teaching and Learning. Last but not least, uh, big congratulations to Schenectady alumni, who was recently named the head baseball coach at Sienna College, which is really big. I think it's Go Saints is the cheer. Uh, we're excited for him and wish him luck. His name is Alice, Alex Jersinski, and so if anybody knows, uh, he was an alumni here of Schenectady, another bright spot in the Capital Region coming from our district. So that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Soled. And we will continue with Board comments. We'll start with Vivian.
No comment today.
Okay, thank you, Vivian. And Eric?
No comments.
Thank you, Eric. I will continue with Amanda.
No comments.
Okay. Um, just really quick, um, I think Superintendent Soled touched on a lot of them, but I did want to point out, I think there's the five-one-eight Common Unity kickoff at Martin Luther King Elementary School, August first, from four to seven P M. It looks like it's gonna be a good time, some refreshments and things of that nature. And then also, Code of Conduct is still open through July twenty-third. For any comments, you can go to the, uh, district website and enter any comments there on Let's Talk.
I have no comments. You took mine. That's okay. That's okay. So we will continue with a presentation. It is, we will now welcome C S E I Design Group and Jacobs, who will present an update on the Schenectady Revitalization Plan.
There's a microphone there, guys, uh, just for the audience at home, just make sure it's on so they can hear. And we have, I think, Tom from Jacobs presenting, uh, Rich Little from S E I, and I think Alistair, fresh off vacation, is joining us.
Uh, so thanks for having us here today. There's a lot going on over the summer, a number of things that's, uh, that were started prior to May sixteenth, but as of May sixteenth, a lot of things firing up, a lot of work being done over the summer with program. We're gonna try to cover that today and give you guys a, a, an overall update on as much as, much as moving around. Uh, I'm not gonna read through this, I think you guys have this, but I won't go through each one, and we're gonna touch each point. Uh, just kind of remind everybody, this is way back, this was kind of the start, this was the, the project pre-planning. If you look at the top line, uh, twenty-twenty-three, the star used to be over there, it's kind of moved over to just above May sixteenth concept. That's where the majority of the, the programming is going on right now. So everything, everything that's laying in the twenty-thirty, uh, project is starting in there, but in there, we've jumped a few projects ahead, moved some things along. The Scala project has moved along a little bit further for freshman academy, and there's a few other projects that we'll talk about that are down in the bid documentary, and, and you see the stars kind of staggering along through there, we'll cover those.
Tom?
Yes, um, moving on, uh, it kind of takes the conceptual, uh, sketch that Rich presented, uh, that you've seen for some time. Um, this plan overall is really what we call the master program schedule. Um, it essentially begins and starts to show this in a kind of more technical format from, uh, now, uh, all the way, I mean, some of the early projects, which you'll see at the top left of this slide, all the way through to the end of, uh, the program here. Uh, you can see that, uh, a lot of the stuff at, at the beginning, the top left corner, is the early projects, which are, uh, Mount Pleasant, uh, turf and track and synthetic field, uh, bleachers, parking lot, um, we'll get into some of that some more. Um, over at the high school, some tennis court renovations and parking lot over there. Um, there's a number of others which we'll touch upon here. Uh, but moving on, you see that there are essentially two parallel tracks. One of them is, basically starts off with, um, Scala, um, and it, it deals with your freshman academy and, and moving and getting renovations going on that, um, in next summer, um, as the target, and, uh, maybe even before that is what we're pushing for. Uh, we, we have to be aggressive on, on our schedules, and then we're working closely with S E I to make sure we can fit the program within the, with the, within the window of time and taking into account lead times and things like that. The second track is basically the, um, elementary school track, which, uh, as you know, is a rotation essentially of elementary schools, um, moving out, renovating, moving in, moving out to the next school, and that's the sequence you, you know about in your R F P.
Yeah, and just, just for you guys to know, it's tough to see in the slide, so if it, if at some point we get a more blown up version, we can get the board, that'd be great.
Absolutely. This is, we'll, we'll give you more detail going forward, but we just wanted to kind of, sometimes it's good to get the big picture, and then we can kind of get into the details.
You'll start once constructions move along, they're gonna be doing board updates with construction information. This schedule constantly, it's a living document. It's gonna constantly be updated. As we start moving through this project, we may decide something shuffles around, we'll let you know when there's a change, but each time there's an update, you'll get a new schedule, so you know what's, what's going on. Uh, this is an update on, uh, security, what's going on. Uh, Day has been working with us, and, uh, the, the ones that I want to highlight, you, if you remember this chart from before, there was a lot of things that were ongoing. You can see that the first two columns, uh, a lot of the work's already been completed. Uh, there's still quite a bit to be done, but the green in there is the ongoing work to do what we did last summer at the middle schools, that we did last summer at the high school, hardening the perimeter of the high school. This summer, we're working on the three middle schools, and we'd be racing around those buildings. That's checking each door, making sure the doors are all, uh, up lockable, uh, card access, cameras, those types of things, so we're ongoing with that. Jeff, anything you want to add about that? Good? I, I will be, we, we've been, I, I've been liking.
He wants all yellows.
Yeah, he wants all yellows. I, I, I want to thank the Board. I mean, your administrative team and the people that are here in this room are putting in a lot of effort, jumping outside their regular job to be with us, meet with us, work with us on all these things, so there's really a lot of extra effort out of these guys and it, people, and it's fantastic, so we really appreciate that. Uh, Steinmetz, what's going on there? Uh, we're moving forward with the, there's some, a little bit of programming left for A I S. Uh, we did, um, Anibal put on his architectural hat at one of our meetings a couple weeks ago, and we, uh, changed around the whole office area, and, um, if you look at the plan in the bottom left corner, uh, just above it is the new office configuration, and the focus on that is gonna be that students, instead of entering in that center core, or public, instead of entering in that center core, are gonna be pushed to the field side of the building. That will end up having new doors and entrance where we have parking adjacent to it and control. Public will then come in and out of that space during days, separating them from student activity, and then we can still keep the other two doors open for arrival and departure. Uh, that'll enhance that, and then it would be office in the front. I'm sorry, I don't think there's a pointer on this one, but, uh, on the top, actually, if you're okay, I'm just gonna move on.
Yeah, yeah. You got the mic.
So this is gonna be office space up in the front, that'll be followed up by nurse, uh, area here, so again, everybody's brought right up to the front. On the backside, this side of the building, instead of having the locker room split, we brought all the locker rooms over to this side, so we'll have locker rooms, weight room, the other locker room, maintenance shop area, and then we were able to buy back in both of these plans, additional program space for the building, which is huge. So up there are two plans, there's two options, we're just trying to finalize on what we're gonna be going ahead with on that plan. Uh, throughout the rest of that building, it's a lot of cleanup, we want to refreshen it. We want to bring up new finishes in each one of the classrooms. The biggest significant change is gonna be all new science labs, so they're stacked in the center core. Um, so they'll be stacked on each one of the floors, each one of the, uh, teams will have their own science area with them.
S E I has given us, uh, back one slide, if you don't mind. Um, S E I has given us some, uh, conceptual, um, or even, even the previous one, but as you can see, the design is evolving. Uh, so conceptual level doc, uh, drawings, if you will, uh, sketches, uh, we continue to use those to, uh, develop exterior envelope, um, uh, reviews, interiors, including mechanicals, who have seemingly soared through the roof these days, the prices for mechanicals, but, uh, there's a lot of new mechanicals i- in this building, um, and we're just proceeding that with that to, uh, fit it into, uh, the program and, uh, also into the timeframe, so we're also, also cognitizing of schedule and being creative about how we can do as much as possible within given timeframes, and then maybe even outside of those timeframes slightly.
The, the building right now is looked at from two standpoints. We have the interior that we're trying to refurbish for the students when they, when they show up, but a year from now, um, and then there's exterior envelope work that needs to be done in the building. Cost-wise and aid-wise, we don't, you know, we're still gonna.
We're still working to figure out how that project's gonna go. So right now, they're riding alongside each other, and what Jacobs is doing is, is their team is pulling together construction estimates. We're gonna be working with the state in August to hopefully start talking about the real numbers of M C A and B A U's, and we'll be talking a lot further about that, and that basically is how they figure out the aid for each building.
M C A is mass cost, maximum cost allowance, and B A U's is, what is the, building aid units, yeah. Just, we know acronyms, I know Jamaica's not here tonight, but I know acronyms are big.
Yeah, I think that's good. Uh, Van Corleone is very similar to, um, Steinmetz, uh, in, in the approach. Right now, we're working with, uh, S E I as well, uh, developing the program, and then we'll do some initial conceptual estimating and scheduling, uh, and, and evaluate our, our, our approach on this, on, uh, Van Corleone, but that's the start essentially, uh, since Fulton's in very good shape, thanks to Mr. Dengler, um, with respect to housing, um, students, um, as a, as a swing building. Um, so that really helps, uh, advance the program. Yeah, moving on to the, uh, Schenectady High School, uh, this is very exciting. Um, we essentially, after this meeting, I think there's a resolution at this meeting, uh, that's gonna be looked at, that'll help us advance through S E D, final approval. We have the proposals at hand and essentially ready and waiting for that S E D approval for activation. Uh, that amounts to, and I wanted to give you some numbers here real quick, um, just to tell you how things are progressing. Essentially, in the first phase, uh, in combination with Schenectady High School, uh, the next project, which will be Mount Pleasant, uh, those are kind of sister projects, along with, uh, the abatement project at Page, that we have things, and a P O signed up, actually, I think yesterday, uh, for Page. That work right now, uh, amounts to nine-point-one-five million, um, that within the next fifteen days will be completely secured, uh, and will be moving on, uh, with that construction work, so that's huge news. Um, again, I can't, I don't, extend enough thanks to the, to the district staff, um, Um, again, I can't extend enough thanks to the to the district staff, um, and to SEI and and Anibal for uh, helping us advance that. Um, thank you also, Mr. Tulluli for getting the POs uh, processed. Um, and then within the next thirty days, another one point seven five million will have uh, essentially uh, encumbered. Um, and that will bring us to approximately ten point nine million dollars, almost eleven million dollars. By the end, within the next thirty days, um, that'll be encumbered. And that means that the contracts have been secured, the workforces have been secured. We're moving through the seminal process, getting all equipment, materials required, and you'll start to see some work occurring around the campus, around your district.
Good news. Next.
All right, Galuli. Uh, I'm sure most of you have seen this project over and over. I'm not gonna dwell on it too much longer. But the one thing I will say is tomorrow, one o'clock immediately after this meeting, uh, one o'clock in the afternoon, we are meeting with the site contractor. Uh, fencing company superintendent that's gonna be on that job. Um, there's gonna be some updates to the district about um, when and where we may need to take over some parking areas uh, to advance the work as efficiently as possible. There is some drainage related to this particular field that needs to be um, uh, occurs in in sync with the field improvements. So some of that parking lot will get torn up, um, adjacent to it, but uh, we'll try to keep it in Brian's area and not over on the other side.
Yeah, we're gonna move all the facility guys. It'll be good to go. This is just real big because we do have youth programming that we're gonna leave to let them know and help them with finding an alternative location for uh, the summer. So but I know that they are super excited as well to get this in its place when it's all done. So I'm sure they're willing to take the sacrifice. But this is a big deal for us and I think a big deal for this side of the city. Uh, as people always talk about two sides of Schenectady, I think this side has been long neglected. So we're really excited to see this happen.
It will most likely. We're finalizing schedule with the contractors tomorrow. Uh, and their availability will most likely be in in sequence of order. Um, the high school, uh, uh, starting off the summer, probably late summer, but getting started, uh, and then being substantially complete on or about Thanksgiving. Um, that's kind of a hundred percent, if you will. Um, it could go as late. If we can advance it more, we will. Um, we'll push them as as hard as we can to get that work done and completed and get out and get back to normal activities over there. Cause we know it's gonna be a little bit of an interruption. But uh, over at Mount Pleasant, um, you know, that essentially is probably looking at a September start and realistically. Uh, but that'll go through the following um, end of August. Uh, just in time, if you will. I think two weeks prior to that, um, Matt Schools and I talked today about making sure that the parking is available, the new parking is available over there two weeks before school. So that it would be the least amount of impact to the to the um, normal staff, if you will. So, next slide please. Thank you. Talk briefly about Page. Um, we've done extensive review of this work. It's a not only a an abatement project, but it's a confined space crawl space, which is uh, another added level of complexity. Uh, and it takes a very um, rigorous kind of sequencing of activities. And all of those are sorted out right now and we have the purchase order cut and we're already, uh, we have a variance that was cut as well. Uh, and we're ready to get going as soon as probably Monday of next week. Moving on.
And that's why we didn't put summer programming there, just so the board knows. We didn't put it here because we were gonna have some extensive abatement work there, asbestos and and uh-
It's really a two-part project. There's uh, the abatement first in that area, since it is that confined space. We're trying to get as much as done as this summer as possible. We may even come back over Christmas and see if we can get some more work done and just completely get out of there. And uh, because the following summer, there's some mechanical ventilation of that area, along with structural and shafts. They have to go up through the building as well. So we want to get all the abatement done now and and so we're in good shape for for next summer. So that work doesn't have to get into any abatement issues and then ultimately, um, in the sequence of the elementary schools, integrating that in as well. Yeah, that's okay?
I finally get to talk. There we go. Um, so yes, we've got Pleasant Valley Elementary, which you'll see the cafeteria addition there, which is actually about twenty eight hundred square feet of addition. Um, we recently, I've got Chippewa, which is State Historic Preservation Office approval, um, because we are connecting into a building that is about a hundred and ten years old, I believe. The, right now, I've been working with Terry and his team to um, to to basically work out the funding with the excess school lunch fund. Over at the SED, uh, but it's it's gonna essentially double the footprint of the cafeteria and it's gonna provide a designated kitchen warming area, which which is not as you, if you walk into Pleasant Valley, it's all one big space. Um, but we're gonna bring in a lot, an awful lot more daylight into the space as well, um, and have some-
So this is the new footprint?
It's nice. Yeah, so the big thing here, when I walked into that building, when the principal, one thing she asked me from day one was like, can you help me in the cafeteria? And um, I told her we'd promise to make it a better place than it was when Mr. DiCaprio was principal there. So we're gonna give her a bigger cafeteria.
Yeah, so this is really big though for them. It's it's actually just, I think, just concrete out there, right? Right now currently?
Right now, it's asphalt, yeah.
Asphalt, yeah. So we're not losing any playground space. They're not losing anything like that.
No. We also provide a little bit more asphalt area, which is gonna have some um, picnic benches and such for the the staff or students to be able to sit on underneath the trees for shading. Uh, this actually works in conjunction with uh, which Tom will touch on a little bit, uh, the playground um, upgrades. Uh, because some of the the work in this area will impact, they'll have to occur at the same time essentially. So we're not kind of redoing any of the playground work.
This also allows her to feed more kids at once. And right now, like, I think her school is one of the schools that had to have an early lunch period because they could only fit so many kids. They would, I think they were starting around ten, ten twenty or something like that. And that's pretty early for lunch.
I mean, the good thing about, or the fun thing, I guess, from an architectural standpoint with this addition is there's some elements who've had to kind of maintain from the existing like features of the building. So some of the kind of ornate brickwork, um, lattice work and the the kind of wrought iron detailing, we're trying to bring forward into the the new addition as well. Can I get next? Yeah, plus, I mean, obviously with the the exist, your existing cafeteria has kind of some of the kind of acoustic baffles. We know that there's gonna be noise within a cafeteria. It's not natural for, you know, students like to chat. So we're putting in some dropped acoustic clouds to try and prevent, you know, a lot of sound reverberation in the space. At the same time, adding a little bit of fun, the elements of some bright colors and some different lighting.
Yeah, I think too, there's the, if you go back real quick, the food line is now more of an actual food line. Right now, they currently serve, everyone's out like in the open. And so now there's an actual cafeteria space. There's actual storage for the cafeteria. So like, there's food storage. So like, this will help our food services, which is the biggest thing, to make sure we can have more than just heated food.
Close down and you can still use the open public space.
Correct.
But the kitchen is going to still be, as you walk in, it's on the left.
No, it'll be on the backside. It's gonna flip over. So that red area.
Right now, it runs right along here. You come in this corner and it's kind of right out here. So now we're gonna create a brand new kitchen back in this area. So students will come in, line up along this wall, go through the serving line, they'll come out this door and filter through. This gives us storage and backup house over here. Deliveries and arrival are gonna come in back out of this area. But yeah, that's all brand new kitchen, you know, serving to move the students through. The goal there is for, hopefully, we can get it down to two lunch areas, which will maximize that building's time terms.
And next slide. So the second part of us, of our kitchen renovation work is obviously over at Yates. This one is currently in, pending kind of getting picked up by the Architectural Engineering Review Team over SED. Um, this one's a little, uh, there's no addition to this one, but it's still quite an involved renovation. Um, we're gonna be removing uh, the existing kind of custodian storage area and the the boys bathroom uh, to allow for a larger, more, um, I guess, more efficient warming kitchen. So right, right now, they have sort of almost like a galley kitchen look. Um, so we're, we have a walk-in cooler. We've got a larger kind of warming kitchen. We have a designated custodian area specifically to kind of for any spills in the cafeteria. And also like a dry storage area at the back. Um, we'll also be um, upgrading kind of the finishes in the existing cafeteria space as well. Bring in some some better lighting, um, some nicer finishes on the walls. Again, acoustic treatment, so we don't have that kind of reverberation.
If you're familiar with the building, it's back in this little corner here. The kitchen was very small, so we've taken over this area, renovated it, and we did this place, uh, maintenance. And uh, thanks to some negotiations with Mr. Spooner and his team, we're able to move them to another area of the building that's was well underutilized.
Yeah, it's an area that's uh, that's, as I say, it's underutilized. It's 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 gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be brought back onboard because of the work to do to waterproofing outside that uh, Mr. Dangle and his team were kind of pushing ahead. Um, that's gonna allow for us to be able to bring back some of the space that's that's previously used, but hasn't been used for decades.
Okay, at Washington Irving, uh, there's a couple of bullet points here. I want to touch on um, the water line replacement over there. Uh, for fiscal responsibility, I'm gonna say, um, basically the district is uh, wanting to to make sure we find a, follow a traditional and my SED track, if you will, uh, by the submission of the drawings and in the water line replacement project. So uh, it'll go through formal SED approval approval process, which takes probably at least four months these days. And uh, then hopefully, um, will be released not long after the first of the year and we can get out to bid and then have this bidding secured for uh, summer of twenty twenty four on this project. That's where we're tracking right now. Uh, but that's this, this has been tossed around a lot because there's only a a portion of it that we could have done this summer and that's out on the street. But we think we're gonna get better pricing and 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 it's more attractive project overall to um, to to bid it out that way. Second bullet point is really uh, what the district is doing right now. The district is working with SEI and um, some of the user groups. Uh, and I guess uh, over at the, the district is working on uh, interior painting, flooring, refinishing of some wood floors in four, four classrooms, uh, an office area and a and a toilet room. Um, so they're working on that. I'm not sure which floor that's on, third floor. Um, so that's the work for the summer that's scheduled. Um, Brian's doing a great job pushing that along. Uh, and then moving on to uh, Hamilton Elementary School.
Just just hold there for a second. Uh, the board will be considering this as a resolution tonight, but this is some information as to what you'll be considering. So I think this is important for you to know what the parapet, I didn't know what a parapet was. I had to Google it, uh, or I had Tyrone Google it uh, for me. Um, but yes, go ahead.
Blue and red. So there's two different, there's two different colors, cause there's two different stones. Um, the the stone cap is uh, completely deteriorated. The roof was replaced in the last few years. And they went in underneath it, as you can see in the top left picture or the top right picture, the the structure of the stone itself is just falling apart. It's falling on the roof, but worse, it's falling into the courtyard and now falling into the adjacent parking area. Um, so the, it was noted, we've seen it up there, but now it's moved to the next level. It's going to need to be dealt with. Uh, we don't want to wait, so we're gonna go back to state head and tell them, look, this this has to be dealt with now. They need the courtyard, they need the parking area. So we're gonna push this along and get it done. Um, but from from the uh, it's really just the stone that sits on top of the walls. The rest of it is all good. Your roof up there is in great shape. But the stone that actually sits on the top is what's falling apart.
And if you zoom in on the picture, you can see a better piece of it, but it's literally just the concrete on the top that's deteriorated.
So it's a block about eight inches high and about a foot and a half, foot, one foot two wide. So it just, it creates a drip on each side and it just sits on top of the wall and is anchored there, but the the material is just because we don't want another winter, it soothes water, it's sort of freezing, it just accelerates that deterioration, so we're way ahead of it.
So the resolution tonight, the board will consider will give us permission to, the board will deem it an emergency project. We'll then be able to go to the state on this, get this going right away. We have to put up, uh, what's uh, does this structure?
Well, we're evaluating scaffolding or lifts.
Yeah, so we have to get work right away. And just to remind you, Hamilton has an interior playground that we will not have open and available to kids because of the fear of something falling. So that's why we want to take care of this. So we can gain that, gain that recess space back for our, for our children.
The key to the decision you're making today about emergency project is the fact that we don't have to wait the four months for them to go through their normal routine. This is an avenue when you have a situation arise, that the state understands it, we still have to do that process. But they're gonna let us go ahead with it right now, so we can get it moving.
It's you, Alistair.
I can talk playgrounds, yeah, I mean.
Uh, we just wanna, I guess, at this point, I want to fold in, um, uh, Brian here with us. We have spent an extensive amount of time chasing down what you can go ahead and come up with.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's, you have a lot of playgrounds, obviously. It's broken down into um, Hamilton and Woodlawn, MLK and Pleasant Valley. Although we're, you know, Pleasant Valley occurs at the end of it, which is obviously what I mentioned earlier, it's gonna work in conjunction with the addition next summer. The the team that um, are gonna be renovating your your playgrounds, I think they're supposed to start fairly soon, I'm, we're hoping. That is the plan, it is. Yeah, so um, the intent is to tackle two playgrounds this summer or into fall. And then the following two will be next year and we'll just keep, keep moving forward. The the secret is really, we don't want to be renovating spaces that we're gonna be touching with any other project. So, as I say, we just keep pushing to get it done as quickly as possible.
So Hamilton and MLK are targeted for late summer or early fall here currently. Next year would be potentially Pleasant Valley, Woodlawn aligned with the cafeteria space, which we had just heard about. So there is some intentionality around this work. One of the challenges is that the vendor is, you know, max, I think. And so we're also subject to their timeline a little bit because everybody's trying to get work done and with the pandemic and supplies and materials. So that's kind of been our challenge right now to get this kicked off.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a lot of districts have used ARP funds to buy a playground equipment. I mean, I think we could probably argue that we're probably one of his largest clients, um, certainly with, cause we're tackling so many playgrounds. But that's, we're, you know, a district and there's a lot of, there's very, there's more districts than our vendors, let's be, and fabrication. And it's just, we're just pushing and pushing to try and, you know, make sure-
And that was one big thing about the American Rescue Plan was that it was specifically a language around creating outdoor learning spaces, outdoor resource. So everyone took advantage of that to say, let's refresh it. So just, we just want to let you know that this is still on on target. The plan is that Brian is gonna make make some magic and get some some work going, right, Mary? Brian? He'll show up if he has to to the guy's house.
Meanwhile, the market is flooded. Exactly. So we're dealing with that.
I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed. We've done a lot of work with um, the administrative team and and looked across uh, the building at Liberty Street. And we've uh, laid out a program uh, for each one of the administrative areas and fit everybody in there and that, in what we would call a test fit. Uh, the next step is that we'll be going in and sitting down with each one of the administrative groups and looking at each one of their areas. How do they actually fit into the space? How many file cabinets do you need? What are your desks? Where are you at? And we'll finish that up over the next couple of, over the next couple of months. And then we'll determine, there is some areas that we're gonna be able to just kind of move into. But there are some other areas where we need to do some finish upgrades. Um, the two center areas, you kind of see the cleaner, open space. Those two areas need um, some reconstruction, cause the way the existing configurations are, wouldn't work for anyone other than what it was originally designed for. We'll try to minimize the work, but there is some work that has to be done there. So this is ongoing.
Yeah, and the hope is that we will be hopefully closing by that by the end of summer. Was that Terry, the the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should own Liberty Street hopefully by before September and then we'll start working on this in phases. And the priority, just so that everyone knows, will be to move, you know, the things that are front facing for our families. So registration, uh, human resources, uh, transportation, um, you know, those things that we do more of our customer service. Those will be the priority to get down there first before anything else.
If you look at the footprint, this this area here is going to basically create a public space, a large gathering area. There are already in this area here, windows that are set up for people to come in and and meet and be greeted and dealt with. And then we've got um, high access departments that would need more direct relation to public areas. And then we'll work the team through. So again, a lot of work by your administrative team, looking at how they work together, who's in the right spot, how we join. Um, it was a, it was a lot of, lot of effort there, so we thank them. And again, we thank you guys for the opportunity to be here. Look forward to keep, continue doing these. Uh, if you have any questions, we're, you know, please feel free to ask them and we'll, if it's not tonight and you think of something, pass it through Anibal. We're, we're here and available.
Board members, any questions?
I had just two quick ones. Um, going back to slide six in regards to the district-wide security. Um, and I don't know if it was on the slide or if anyone spoke to it, but um, do we have a timeframe on the completion date for all of our buildings?
Not for all of it, but for those, the the three in the green, the two things in the green, those will be ready for start of school.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And then it'll kind of just continue down the line?
Yep.
So so just so you know, uh, board member, uh, at the end, the like Steinmetz is not, is not like gonna be done because we're also gonna be going in there and getting the freshman campus ready. So we will embed it before we open up for the freshmen. So not everything's gonna be a hundred percent done at Steinmetz because we didn't want to spend the dollars on something that we're gonna potentially not have kids in for a little bit. And then, um, same thing with Fulton, it's not necessarily all done. It's to be done. Be, as we look to bring in a swing space, those are the things we'll address in those campuses. So the goal is that we want everyone, for the most part, uh, moving to all yellow. But some of those other ones are gonna catch up as we do the revitalization work as well, just to be more conscious on our dollars.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, the other one may be a very silly question, but on slide eighteen, going back to the parapet stone?
No silly questions.
I thought that was a stone, you know, like an actual stone. Was it para, was it, come on Lynn, I know you know the name. Parados, see, I knew you would know.
Oh, oh. No, so that stone in and of itself, like what, what does it do? Cause the roof is good, like how, what is it?
The roof comes up the wall and then then curls into what they call a reglet. So the the rubber and the flashing goes in underneath that stone. If you were to look at that wall, if I cut that wall in half, it's it's brick, an another row of brick and a third row of brick to the inside of the building. So you've got these three bricks. That stone sits on top to stop water from penetrating down through. In in more modern buildings, you see metal caps that are put over the top of them. Uh, but basically when the, this vintage and this type of building, it would, it's just a a stone. The the trouble is that when these buildings were built in nineteen two, uh, they didn't have all the vapor barriers, moisture concerns that we have now. So the repetitive joint system that's in there, we're looking to try to clean up some of that stuff, but it's just an inherent nature- we're looking to try to clean up some of that stuff, but it's just an inherent nature of this type of construction. So, that's the capstone that would stop severe weather from coming straight down through the walls.
Got it. Thank you.
I actually have a question too. Is there any type of preventative maintenance plan to kind of prevent this from happening again? Or is there anything that you can do?
So, what, what, what happens? And we just finished it. We do a BCS. As far as, you know, I served as a board member. I'm not a fan of state mandates. However, they did do BCSs, which requires districts to look at their buildings every five years. So, working with your team, with Brian and his team, we're continually to look at these. So, we classify the BCS as a living document. We come out, we take a snapshot in time, build this database, and all of that's in there. So, we know, we give projections on when we think things are going to fail. This was identified. Just this winter took it to a whole new level. I mean, it really crumbled apart on us. Why it wasn't, you know, it wasn't dealt with when the roof was done, we're going to deal with it now. We actually started, we looked at this a few months back, and originally, we were going to try to do it as a maintenance, so that, you know, just like you're talking about, do a little piece here, a little piece here. But, the more we got up there talking about it, looking at it, it's just not something that is a, is a district you want to take on. And doing it as a capital project, the, the revenue returned back to makes more sense because of the, the aid ratio we get on the construction work.
And then this is, and just to, I mean, the board knows this already, but this is the premise behind such an aggressive revitalization plan, was because we know there are significant needs, that the smaller projects, because we tried to hit multiple buildings, it was only like, you know, a couple million here, a couple million here, a couple million here. Us having the ability to pour large numbers of, amounts of dollars with our maximum cost allowance is going to be more strategic and allow us to do some of these things. Now, this building is not technically part of revitalization plan, so we're having to do a little bit of catch-up on this campus, because this is part of the last phase of the previous plan. So, but this is something we didn't understand when they did the roof, why it wouldn't do, you know, up there already. If you look at the photos, you'll literally see, it just, some of it's just falling off. And the concern I have is the interior where the, I mean, I care about cars too, but like, they're the kids. The kids don't have any access to the playground. We have to close that, so they just, you know, you walk the halls, you look at a playground, you can't go out there, you know. Tears at you.
Just so you know, the height of that courtyard wall is around 40, 48 feet tall.
About 46 feet.
46 feet tall, so it's beautiful.
Yeah, you can see it in the picture.
Something that comes off of that, it's not going to get.
Please, don't, don't ever hesitate to ask a question, because there's never, if you thinking of a question, somebody else in the room is too.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, so I have a question.
Sure.
I love hearing the collaborative conversations that you're having with various stakeholders in the district, but I'm wondering, have there been conversations with staff members? I know Scala is a little different because that's going to change, you know, but I'm wondering if that, staff members have been involved in the conversations?
That's a great question. So, high school's a great example. We have met with every group, including teachers and space users of every department and every learning team at that as we're planning forward. We first met within a minute, it's kind of a spiral effect. We met with the administrative teams and got the planning and the programming down. Then we met with groups of teachers. We actually have, we met the last week of school with every group quickly, so that we touched base with them. There's a large number of them that offered time to communicate throughout the summer because they want to be part of it. The reality is, we need that high school plan to keep on the schedules. We need to have the plan finished by early September, at least a, a test fit plan where we're all comfortable with it. To achieve that, we have a lot of work that we're doing this summer, and we need those people and they're addressing it. So, yes, we'll encourage as we start to move further into that plan come September, we'll be looking for student involvement from the building all the, all the way down to that level. The more people that we have on those groups and part of it, the more information, the better we are. At the end of the project, when we build something, we don't want a surprise. It's not open the door, look at it, hey, what'd you build? I like to tell people, if you ask us to come in and build you a kitchen, I couldn't just come in, throw something in there and make it work. I need to understand, how do you operate in your kitchen? Do your family join you in the kitchen? Do you have people sitting in your kitchen? That's the same thing we're doing with your teams. Lynn's been part of it. Tyrone's been a part of it. I think we've had some great meetings with different team members. You'll see some photographs in some of ours with the group meetings that we've had with everybody. So, we're really involving all the stakeholders, right down to the, to the, you know, person sitting in the space.
That's great to hear. And I have one more question for you. I know we've had a lot of conversations in the past, and I believe you actually have talked about it. Scala, well, the new freshman academy, will it have its own cafeteria?
Yes, yes, it does. There's, there's actually, the space that's there right now is not enough. We'll be pushing into the courtyard to create some expanded space to fit them. And then the area, if you're familiar with that building, as you walk into where the cafeteria is now, there's just a little cubby that's being used for a kitchen. We're going to open up, we're going to repurpose that space along there, include taking out the, the large folding door in the gym, because we need that. It's critical space to provide enough kitchen and serving line area for the capacity that building's going to have. But, there's not enough seating, so we are going to have to push out. We're working on it, because it's very sensitive. It's a beautiful courtyard. There's a lot of nice stuff out there. So, how do we make that work?
The kitchen area.
Correct. The kitchen will be over twice the size it is now.
Nice. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
You can give it to Brian. Yeah, thanks. Yeah.
The next order of business are the consent agenda items. Before we do that, a motion to remove item D, Sicra, Hamilton, emergency parapet for a roll call after we vote on the consent agenda. So, after we do the consent agenda, we're going to do a roll call. Okay? So, the consent agenda includes items that are approved by consent and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the consent agenda by a single member if they wish to do so. Would anyone like to remove a consent agenda item? Hearing none. Resolutions five through seven E. And again, we're going to do a roll call for D, as item I's and the consent agenda are presented for approval. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vivian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And now, we will begin with our roll call, and we'll start with Erica.
Yay.
Thank you, Erica.
Yay.
Thank you, Vivian.
Yay.
Thank you, VP. Yay?
Yay.
Thank you, Amanda. So, the motion carries. We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or from board members. Any comments? We do want to thank you again for all the hard work that you've been doing and for the administrative team and all the staff that have been involved. We're really excited about this revitalization plan. It's awesome. It's going to be great for our kids and our community. So, thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call for an executive session. An executive session is now called for the purpose of discussing the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP. Second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Vivian. Any discussion?
Do you want to have folks from the restroom come back or get started right away?
The time is for executive session.
Do you want folks to?
No, I think we're good. I think we're okay. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.